Well, good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of May 10th, 2022. This meeting is called to order, and we will go ahead and make a roll call. What I'm actually doing, just so everybody knows, I'm stalling for time. So, we're going to go ahead and make roll call, and then hopefully the next gentleman will be here that I need. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Hugh.
Do you want me to slow down my vote?
Oh, that's, it's just a roll call, so...
Okay, I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Melner.
I am here.
Perfect. Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.[54.32][54.32](Laughter).
You didn't have to say it so fast. Councilmember Turner.
I didn't know Councilmember Hugh had a slower gear.[63.89][63.89](Laughter). But I'm here.
Vice Mayor.
Present.
Okay, and I also am present, so that didn't actually work very well, but I tried. Next, next on our invocation, the items on our agenda are the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, so again, in the sake of stalling as much as I possibly can, we're going to go ahead and ask if everybody would join us in the pledge of allegiance. Gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if you'd remove it if it's appropriate, and hopefully my pastor will be here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, well, he still hasn't made it, so I guess what I'm going to do is take a point of personal privilege as chair, and the reason I really wanted Pastor Garrett to be able to give our invocation, and look at that, boy, you got perfect timing, sir, come on up.[141.19][141.19](Laughter) I stalled as much as I could. So, anyway, this is Pastor Garrett of the Valley Pentecostal Church, and the reason I wanted him so desperately to give the prayer tonight is I had the opportunity Thursday night to attend a service in a church that they finished after several years. I think there was nearly 2,000 people in his service, and the thing most impressive, other than it being an absolutely beautiful building, is they finished it and they got it completed, and they have zero debt, they paid for it in full, and I'm so impressed by that. Sir, if you'd give our invocation, if everyone, please, please rise.
Thank you for the call, Mayor, forgive us for being just a few moments late. I only ran five stop signs, two red lights, and jumped the curb only three times. I do appreciate the kind remarks and the opportunity that I have today to pray over this council meeting, the deliberations of our city and our great government. Would you bow your heads with us? Dear Jesus, we thank you today for the form of government that you have given to the United States of America. We say it with pride and thankfulness, in God we trust. I prayed that these deliberations today would be of you and on you, and what is good and right for our council, for our mayor, and for our city. Would you guide the hearts, the thoughts, and minds of your people today? We'll thank you for it, we believe you for it, and we ask it in the beautiful name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so very much.
Pastor, thank you so much, and again, congratulations, you have a beautiful building, and we're so glad you chose Glendale to stay. Thank you.
They love you, and want you to come back.
Thank you, sir.
The mayor gave a wonderful political speech.[268.33][268.33](Laughter). But fortunately, we were all impressed.
I like him. I like him. I like him.
Okay, next on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes from the April 26, 2022 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the April 26, 2022 voting meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor, I move the approval of the minutes of the April 26, 2022 voting meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second, and the vice mayor to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, do have it, and that does carry. Moving on to proclamations, we do have a proclamation today that's going to recognize May 15 through 21 as, May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as Public Works Week, and I'll go on down to the podium and I'll finish reading it. It doesn't ring. That rings just answered. Yep. Okay, here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the City of Glendale employees who provide and maintain infrastructure and services collectively known as Public Works, are representatives from our Department of Field Operations. You just going to come up as I call you, or you want me to read it all and then you come up? However you want to do it. Department of Transportation, Department of Water Services, and also the Department of Engineering, which is pretty much everybody in the building.[376.53][376.53](Laughter). Okay, so, we do want to thank everyone of you for what you do for Public Works, and we'll go ahead and read the proclamation here. Charles Tomachoff, Field Operations, I understand you're going to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Proclamation, City of Glendale, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, faculties and, I'm sorry, facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality and life of well-being of the people of the City of Glendale, Arizona, and whereas this infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, or a combination of engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Glendale to gain knowledge of and to maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore I Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim May 15 through 21st, 2022, as Public Works Week. Made further resolved, I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the government agencies, in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. That was signed by myself, our city clerk, this fourth day of May 2022. Who gets this? You get that? All right, very good.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The theme of Public Works Weeks this year is Ready and Resilient, and not only the men and women behind me, but the men and women that work for Public Works have exhibited being ready and resilient throughout the COVID-19 pandemic and beyond. Those services that some of us take for granted, like turning your water on or getting your trash picked up, or having nice smooth roads when you drive through the City of Glendale, all those services are being provided by someone, and many of them are standing behind me, but there are many more at home right now watching, and so, on behalf of the Public Works Department in the City of Glendale, I want to thank those employees, I want to thank our mayor and our council for supporting those employees, and I hope everybody comes out and celebrates Public Works Week with us, and more will be sent out for the rest of the city to know what's going on during Public Works Week. So, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right. We almost do. We look good.[596.16][596.16](Laughter). on the Consent Agenda are of routine nature, or they've been previously studied by the council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the Consent Agenda items?
No, sir.
Perfect. Okay, can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda items 3 through 13?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve Consent Agenda items 3 through 13.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second, and Councilmember Clark to approve the Consent Agenda items 3 through 13. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to Consent Resolutions, Ms. Bauer, would you please read Consent Resolution Items 14 through 17 by number and title, please?
Item 14, Resolution Number R22-43, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Peoria for emergency backup water services. Item 15, Resolution Number R22-44, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Water Resources, the Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation, and the Central Arizona Water Conservation District for the conservation of Central Arizona Project Water. Item 16, Resolution Number R22-45, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with the Flood Control District of Maricopa County for the Royal Shadows Improvement Project. Item 17, Resolution Number R22-46, a resolution the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, entering into an agreement to accept and expend funds from the fiscal year 2022 congestion mitigation and air quality improvement grant award from the Maricopa Association of Governments in the approximate amount of $286,529 for the purchase of one PM10 certified street sweeper. That concludes the Consent Resolutions.
And to confirm, we have no speaker cards, items 14 through 17?
That is correct.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve items 14 through 17 on the Consent Resolutions Agenda?
Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we approve Consent Resolutions 14 through 17.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second, and Councilmember Hugh to approve the items 14 through 17 on the Consent Resolutions Agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Here's the ayes have it, do have it, that also carries. Moving on to bids and contracts, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 18, please?
Award RFP 21-46 and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Via Mobility LLC for the provision of paratransit and microtransit scheduling software, associated license, and maintenance fees, and there are no speaker cards.
We have any questions from the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 18?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item 18, Service Agreement with Via Mobility.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, a second, and Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Mayor, as is my habit and practice, I will be voting no on this and the succeeding item, as they are five-year contracts. Thank you, and I vote nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 19, please?
Award of Request for Proposal 22-17 and authorization to enter into an agreement for hoist and crane service and certification. There are no speaker cards.
No speaker cards, could I get a motion to approve? Anybody?
Oh, yes, Mayor, I move we award RFP 22-17.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second, and the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 20, please?
Ordinance Number O22-33, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a power transmission easement in favor of Salt River Project agricultural improvement and power district along the west side of 67th Avenue, south of Alice Avenue, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Glendale Engineer David Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
City engineer, I should say.
That's right. Mayor, City Council, this council item, the purpose of this council item is to approve an easement for Salt River Project to provide electric service to the Nekona Apartments. Nekona Apartments are located on 67th Avenue between Northern Olive on Alice on the west side. This concludes my presentation. If there are any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on ordinance 20? Hearing none. Can I get a motion, please?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we pass and adopt ordinance O22-33 in wave reading beyond the title.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second, and Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 21, ordinance 022-34?
Ordinance Number O22-34, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 29.1, residential rental property, Article 3, administration and enforcement, by adding Section 29.1-50, short-term rentals, and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, here to speak tonight to both items, number 21 and 22 on the agenda, is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 29, adding a section for short-term rentals. This would be in compliance with state law and what cities are allowed to do. Essentially, it mandates that owners provide contact information, emergency contact information, and it does limit some of the use of short-term rentals for, you can't use it for commercial reasons, and it can't be a silver-living environment, all allowed and provided for in Arizona statutes. This was discussed in a workshop about a month ago, and consensus was to bring it forward, so I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, can you explain how we intend to notify the owners of short-term rentals that we're going to be requiring this?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I've spoken with Budget and Finance, one of our deputy finance directors is aware of software in the market that does a public database search of the most popular short-term rental sites, and that would provide a list to the city that we could then mail out to the owners of those short-term rentals and request, politely request in the beginning that they register with us.
Okay, and everything we're doing is completely compliant, I mean, we really don't have any enforcement ability anyway on short-term rentals. We're doing everything we can as, from a city perspective, to regulate these as best we can.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that's correct.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion on item 21?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, I was sleeping. I move we pass and adopt ordinance Number 022-34.
Second.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Clark, second, and the vice mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 22, ordinance 022-35?
Ordinance Number O22-35, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, nuisances, by adding Article 10, nuisance parties and unlawful gatherings.
Mayor, as members of the council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 25, the nuisances ordinance of our city code, specifically adding Article 10, nuisance parties and unlawful gatherings. This was discussed in workshop a couple of weeks ago with the short-term rental ordinance that was just passed. Essentially, this makes it illegal for people that are occupying short-term rentals, so the actual renters, to throw nuisance parties or unlawful gatherings. So, the difference between a nuisance party and an unlawful gathering essentially is the criminal element. So, an unlawful gathering would include underage drinking or illicit drug use, for example. A nuisance party would be a group of adults that aren't necessarily committing any crimes other than they're disturbing the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. Many of these parties require a pretty extensive police response, and so this ordinance would allow for the police chief to assess a fee based on his or her response, currently his response and his team's response, and then there would also be a citation issued through the court with a fine schedule, both defined within the ordinance. On top of that, understanding that there was some conversation about the owner being held accountable, the language in the ordinance makes it very clear that the city has to demonstrate that the owner was negligent or should have known, a reasonable person would have known that the activity was going to occur if you rented to a certain group of people, and outside of that city proof of that negligence, a fee or fine would not be administered to the owner. We would work with the owner to ensure that they understood what the city's expectations were to maintain peace and quiet in our neighborhoods, and what our expectation of how they would work with the city to accomplish that while still maintaining their short-term rental. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion on item 22, ordinance 022-35?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we adopt ordinance Number 22-35.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second, I'm sorry, a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second, and Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion?
The like.
Hearing none, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 23, Resolution R22-47?
Resolution Number R22-47, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting a tentative budget of the amounts required for the public expense for the City of Glendale for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, setting forth the revenue and the amount to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, adopting city council's financial policies, and giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers and for fixing tax levies.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Budget and Finance Director Lyset Camacho.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year 2023. This is also a request for city council to give notice of the date for public hearings on the fiscal year 2023 final budget adoption, and the property tax levy on June 14, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. here at the council chambers, and fiscal year 2023 property tax levy adoption on June 28, 2022, also at 5:30 p.m. here at the council chambers. There are two changes to the tentative budget since you last saw it in April. The changes are in the Water and Wastewater Fund. The first one is contingency was reduced from 5 million to 2 million, and their overall capital improvement plan was reduced by 12.1 million. The proposed tentative budget for fiscal year 2023 is 1.07 billion and includes an operating budget of 546 million, a capital improvement budget of 288 million, a debt service budget of 97 million, and a contingency appropriation of 139 million. The total revenue budget is 874 million, and the total transfer budget is 208 million. The budget does not include an increase to the primary property tax rate, and Exhibit A of the council item is, contains the detail of the proposed tentative budget. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. The one thing, when you first read it, it said an amount to be raised by direct property taxation, so if somebody wasn't really paying real close attention, I'd like you to repeat for everybody, by how much are we raising property tax?
Mayor, members of the council, the property tax rate for fiscal year 2023 is actually decreasing.
That's what I wanted you to say. Perfect. Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just would like, I want to make sure I understand the two changes that were made to the budget. What was taken out of the CIP 12 million, was it due to not being able to get all of the work done the next, this next budget cycle? And then, what was the, what was the decision about reducing the contingency down 5 million to 2 million? I didn't receive a memo, I'd like to understand that.
Mayor? Mayor, members of the council, yes, on the first case, water reduced, some of their carryover was reduced for next year, and in addition to that, to make it a little bit more reasonable, the, a portion of the CIP was sprout out over additional years, to make it more to where they could get that work done, instead of having it front-loaded a lot in one year, that couldn't be done, so that, some adjustments were made as well. And then, because of additional costs in the water fund, primarily some that we talked to you about, some inflationary pressures and that, we reduced their contingency because of affordability.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, never mind, I'll explain my vote when it comes to the vote.
Okay, so, can I get a motion on item 23, Resolution R22-47?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion approved, item 23, Resolution Number R22-47. Second.
I have a motion from the vice mayor, a second, and Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll conduct a roll call vote with Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, would you like to explain your vote?
I would like to explain my vote. Mayor, I intend to vote yes, but I would like to say that there's a lot of good stuff in this budget. I, from the very beginning, expressed some concern about the price tag on the city hall remodel, and I would just, as we always do, expect fiscal restraint to be shown as we move forward with this endeavor, and that we do include the public as we move forward with the investment in the city hall. And with that, I vote aye, thank you.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote.
Go ahead.
Ditto to what Councilmember Tomachoff said, and with that, I vote aye.
Vice Mayor Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Council comments and suggestions, starting with Councilmember Clark.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Read your, mic for going on.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, one final reminder and invitation for staff and Choya residents to attend the first annual Choya District Barbecue this Thursday at 5:30 at Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center. Come, and we'll play games and have barbecue and just have a good time, so hope you can all make it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, and then I do have something that I'd like to comment on, is an event that we did on Friday night, and it was the induction ceremony for the young men and women that made that choice to serve our country. It was an extremely, extremely well-attended, we had well over 800 people in attendance, and it really was a very moving event. We did have, I believe, three councilmembers that made, made it to that. If you didn't get a chance to see it, if you'd like to look at it, if you go onto the website, and I, for the life of me, can't remember what it is, but if you call my office, 623-930-2260, we'll get you the website, you can watch it, and if you got any red blood in you that's American, I'll guarantee you what, you'll love it. So, it really was a great, great event, so I want to thank everybody that made that possible for these young men and women to make that choice to serve. So, moving on to our next item, citizens' comments, the agenda...